All right, we'll call this meeting to order at 6:38. Start off with the agenda amendments. I have one under old business, roof update.
Okay.
That's the only one I have. Do you have any?
Not really.
Uh, well, I guess we'll skip public comments, we have no public today. Uh, new business. Don't seem to have any new business, because this board's not gonna be here too much longer.
How about future, I mean, possible topics for future board member, uh, board meeting agenda?
So what would you like to discuss next week, uh, next month, Dave?
No, I'm thinking about two months from now.
Nah, they won't be here, so.
Okay, never mind.
I do know that what we would like to do, and we haven't scheduled it yet or planned it, but we would like to, um, have all the local boards, you know, maybe, uh, go to the Abbey and see if we can, uh, have a little celebration. We just pick a night and everyone who can make it come, but I think it would just be nice sometime in June, uh, to do that and invite everybody.
Hmm. I think that's a great idea.
I found it.
Yeah.
Richard, you were missing.
Chris, I'm first round wondering.
We have an amendment, I just noticed that the bond anticipation paperwork is not on there.
You can, I hope you're doing it.
Under business report, our whole business.
You got it, you good there?
What we're calling for?
The bond anticipation, um, note paperwork that needs to be signed is not on this.
Oh.
We'll just sort of make it in. Now, it's probably my fault.
No, Parette and I did this over email, so that made it a little more difficult.
Yeah, and I mailed it out on them, I didn't help them at all, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, yeah, you know, I am.
Now they have two meeting, two boards coming.
Yeah, a little bit, a little bit, oh, you know, I try to run a business too, but.
Oh, there's that.
So, uh, future meeting dates, uh, the MVSD budget vote is scheduled for June 11th, it'll be seven to sevens, Australian ballot voting, so for Highgate voters, you vote at the arena. Uh, our next board meeting, uh, for Highgate will be June 13th at 6:30 PM here, which will also probably be our last meeting. Uh, so on to adopting meeting minutes for April 11th. I'll take a motion or a doubt.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Looks good to me.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so there's discussion, I'm looking at May 1.
May 1st was the, um, Mississauga.
Yeah, wrong board, Steve.
I'm in the wrong folder, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Good morning.
I have a red folder and a green folder, I grabbed the red folder.
Way to go.
Must've been that shot.
Mm-hmm.
So, hearing no other discussion, all those in favor of adopting April 11th's meeting minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, four zero. Ooh, we're cruising. Uh, principals report.
Um, I was over there to just realize I didn't finish the sentence, but it started on there. Uh, it wasn't due until much longer, but that's cool, but a little bit embarrassing.
It's quite extensive.
Yeah, I guess you could guess.
Somebody interrupted you there, are these separate packets?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Um. Yeah.
So, the big, a couple of the, the big.
Do you like one of the pieces?
Big pieces are S-Back tests have begun, and, um, we tried, as I've mentioned before,
we tried to use what worked the year before, uh, not use what didn't work, um, and what really worked last year was a big S-Back pep rally, that was Friday afternoon. So, it's actually, it's, it is a lot of fun. Um, uh, you know, the, the gyms line, you know, the K-2 kids go in there and they all get signs cheering on the older kids, and they kind of line the, the gymnasium, and a whole class entered from side doors to loud music. Um, honestly, I wish we just had a spotlight, could we turn off the lights and the music? But anyway, the kids come running in and they're high-fiving, they make a lap around the clock, around the gym. Um, and then, uh, then there was a little inspirational video about, you know, doing your best, and, um, it was actually kind of an interesting one about a guy who was locked, Houdini, who was locked in a jail cell, and, um, he put the straitjacket on and all that, and he just couldn't get out, it couldn't, finally gave up, and then he just had exhaustion collapse against the door, which was never locked to begin with. Sort of like, the only, you know, doors that aren't open are the ones that you're closed in your mind, and, so, uh, kids found it pretty entertaining. And then we also use that opportunity to just sneak in a few test-taking tips, you know, like multiple choice, there are always two that really aren't the answer, and you gotta find those obvious ones that aren't the answer, narrow it down if you don't know, and then do your best, you know, best educated guess.
It's always all the above.
Or all the above. Uh, I was, I wrote about that, but I noticed it's still there, so by Noah, uh, some of our teachers actually put up a, um, that's a real mint plant and a rosemary plant, and they turned the fan on too, a little test aromatherapy for the kids. Um, 'cause they do all their testing in here, uh, which I think there's research that goes the other way, you know, one is it's kind of formal and they take it seriously, and then other sides say it's, they're more comfortable in their rooms, you know, test-taking, but we're not, um, so confident in our internet reaching everywhere consistently, and we just play it safe and do it here. Uh, but, and they get mints, you know, to eat on the table, so there are all kinds of things, and so far, it has been awesome. The kids have taken this, uh, very seriously, they're absolutely doing their very best. Teachers have done a great job preparing kids, um, and proctoring. Um, you know, I've been at schools where the kids take the test and the adults sit down and read a book, our, our proctors are up, they're walking around, um, that means a lot to kids, they, they know, they don't slough off either, and, uh, and then you have one person monitoring the screen of all the kids that are taking it, so you can see if the kid's going too fast, kid's going too slow, you can't help them, but you can say, you know, hey, are you checking your work, and, you know, you know, make sure you slow down and take your time, that kind of stuff. So, teachers have just been fabulous about all of that, all of that, uh, those little things that all add up to better test scores, so we are, uh, very hopeful. Um, and, and the last piece on that was that the third grade teachers were such advocates for their kids that they, um, they, they said last year when their kids went in first, it's only the K-2 kids cheering, and it wasn't that big a deal, and so they, they've asked that their kids go in last this year to the pep rally, and, and so they did, so the whole gym at that point is just full with the third graders. So even each team is getting, teachers are really getting into it and advocating for their kids, um, and so it's really, it's pretty inspiring, so we're, we're very hopeful. Um, and as I said, the students showing, have shown incredible, um, uh, energy and concentration taking this. Um, under high-quality staff instruction, that's just the title there, but, so I thought it would go best there, but, um, Paul Agree, who has taught here for, I think, 18 years, has accepted a position at Cambridge Elementary School.
Wow.
So, um, just a veteran teacher, and I, and I will say that, um, work for the new board, I think, uh, was that a couple of years ago, you, you all negotiated with the union to, um, increase the pay of the, of the brand-new teachers to make us competitive, uh, with not only St. Aldens, but almost competitive with, with Chitting County, we're not that far behind. Um, there's a teacher shortage out there, and some of our veteran teachers who before said, "Well, no one's gonna hire me at 25 years' experience," they're now hiring these people, so, um, I'm hoping the negotiations can focus on, um, retaining some of our veteran teachers who may be tempted now to leave for a higher-paying district just down the road. Um, so, anyway.
Yeah, he does travel quite a ways, doesn't he?
Yeah, yeah.
Where does he live? Can't remember.
He lives in Fairfax, so. But anyway, it's, I, it's just something I've talked about with other principals around, um, the northwest part of Vermont, and how, um, how they are looking at veteran teachers, because the applicant pools are pretty low and they're shallow, not a lot of numbers. Um, that being said, we've already gotten, I think, nine, and I would say seven serious applicants for this position after one day of posting, so that's, that's hopeful.
Yeah.
Um, but, but they're out there. Um, the other big piece is that, um, the last Alice drill was conducted, safety drill was conducted last week, and, uh, I'm just gonna, once again, say Chris, Chris Palmer's done an incredible job with that. Um, as you know, we've been kind of ramping it up from the very beginning, and this last one featured, uh, no known time, um, no known place ahead of time, um, and a reaction to see what our teachers would do. And, uh, we had, uh, as we had for all of our evacuation drills, we've had the Sheriff's Department and Vermont State Police have come by to supervise, so when, um, some teachers made a decision to do, do something, um, they might have actually seen a state trooper, um, you know, just there, which for the kids, take it more, even took it even more seriously.
Yeah.
So, um, at this point, we, we think that we are as prepared, I think we have some devices that we've ordered for next year for, for, um, certain places that will help us be a little bit more secure in the building, but, um, other than that, I would say the staff is pretty well-prepped, um, if there was a tragic, um, type of event that might ha, might unfold here itself, and as unfortunately, as most recently as the other day, this is happening all too often, um, so I think our, uh, teachers are very appreciative of Chris's efforts this year to get us really prepared for, um, the unexpected, so. Um, and I'd like to thank the Sheriff's Department and the State Police for showing up for every drill, uh, which is great. They always make sure they know that they're not sure if they can be here, they don't promise, but they've made it, uh, which I think is, is great. And then the last thing, um, just a survey, um, uh, that we wanted to share with you, uh, this is the third year in a row that we have done a survey like this with survey students. Um, so, we all know that evaluation usually is from the top down, your boss evaluates you, your boss evaluates you, I think, I don't say just in education, but that's, since that's all I've ever known, I'm gonna say that, um, I believe it's equally important the other way, that, that we, we need to ask kids, you know, I always felt the, the kids are the ones who know the teacher the best, the teachers are the ones that know the principal the best, the principals know the superintendent best, yet it always flows the other way, and, um, I know when I was a teacher, my students evaluated me twice a year, um, I don't, I don't think I learned a whole lot new, but it reinforced what I needed to work on, and so we ask kids, you know, these questions, um, you know, at all grade levels, you know, with some help from teachers, of course, but, um, just about how they feel being a student here. Um, and, and we're gonna quantify all those and put out some data for teachers, but as you can see there, you know, do you feel like you're important in class, and is it easy to talk to adults, um, are you part of a team in your classroom, do you feel safe, do you feel comfortable speaking up for yourself, do you feel like you can share your opinions, do you feel respected by adults? I mean, who, who would've thought that, you know, it's always been right, the kids should respect the adults? Well, we're asking our adults now to model that, you know, and say, hey, if you want them to be, and, and kids, kids call us on it pretty quickly, uh, I can't tell you the number, 'cause I deal with like, well, she was disrespectful to me, and that's a little tricky, because you do, I'm still a little old-school about, you know, you respect your adults and your teachers, but, um, but, you know, quietly conversations are had with teachers about, we gotta model it, especially if we want it to last long-term. So, anyway, um, so we'll hopefully be able to give you some feedback on this at the next board meeting, this, this a while ago, um, but there's also the question, what, what part of our, our class or my teaching do you like, what parts of my teaching do you dislike? Um, is there anything else you want me to tell about our class? So, um, we just think it's important that students are asked how they think we're doing. Um, so, hopefully get you some good feedback.
Are they doing this in class, or is this a home thing?
In class, yeah. Are you gonna talk about the IFR?
I wanna.
Oh, not, we're not doing that yet, sorry.
No, I think, um, we can just, I think if you wanna just share what we did today, and then we can, uh, share with the boards.
Sure, yeah, we're, we're gonna work on a roll out for the, for the boards, um, but that integrated field review of a team of, um, teachers and State Department of Education people and from other districts came and visited us, um, and we also had some members of our school go out to other schools and serve as the team, but they leave a pretty comprehensive report behind for how we're doing, um, and so one of the, um, directors, I think, Josh, the director from the Agency of Education, came and reviewed our general report with administrators today, and, uh, that's something that Coach and Julie are gonna look at, and then kind of figure out how we're gonna roll that out to the, the boards. But it was very positive.
It was really positive.
Good information, and so, and it was, and it was, I think, very honest, you know, there were some things that we do well, there were some things, and there were recommendations also, so we're gonna take a good look at those.
I do wanna say though, Pat, 'cause I was thinking of Highgate in particular, and like all the good work that's happened here around the culture, and the fact, and it's not in the report, but his comments about how it was repeatedly pointed out by the educators that came, how the social-emotional environment of our schools, that it was attended to, that we had systems in place, that we were sort of out front, um, and really working hard in that area, and, you know, I'm somebody who went on tours of other schools, and, um, it, I just think it was really, he said it more than once, so they must've really been important, and I just think, um, it, it was a very positive experience, and I think that the recommendations they did give us, none of them were surprises, they're things that were like, yep, those are our next steps, those are things we're working on, um, but most of it was just really, um, a very nice commendations for the work going on in all our buildings, so, we'll hopefully be able to just bring a synopsis next, next time.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any questions or comments on the principal's report?
I like your survey.
I do too.
Okay, on to the business report, warrants.
Working on.
Working on, all right, we'll come back to you.
I have the monthly warrants though, those are the bills, did I give you the, sorry, hi. She's pretty active.
Oh, the totals.
All right, Steve. While you're doing that, I can show you pictures.
Need to receive.
That Carol shared with me from your, um, play that you just had about with the circus, and, uh, just some pictures that Carol LaZott took of your students, and how wonderful they look, and how, what a great job they all do with theater in Highgate.
So I will just, um, commend Ernie, that was another Ernie Hemley production.
There she is, right there.
Trigged to P.T. Barnum.
Yeah.
And, um.
I liked it.
Thirty-two students participated in that.
Oh, look great in front there, Steve. Yeah, I know, I see her, yeah, she sticks out, a little ginger.
And they were not all, and many are students that aren't, you know, they don't play on a sports team or that, so it's just another group of kids that has a connection, positive connection to school, there were some athletes in there as well, it was a real mix, but, um, I actually was so impressed with the numbers, I, I literally counted them when they lined up at the end, um, to see it, were thirty-two students that participated in that play. It was neat.
I can tell you that personally, um, I think the more they do it, the more comfortable they are.
Yeah.
Because my, was, um, she was more comfortable this time, she did a better job, so I think Ernie's doing a great job.
Oh, no doubt there.
Well, it just gives kids such, you know, we have these transferable skills that our
students really need to be proficient in when they grow, and, and public speaking and communication is such an important part in everything you do after high school, you know, and you can see the kids who've had opportunities to stand up in front of people and, um, speak publicly and.
Ernie, Ernie also commented that when our school went to see the, um, the Cisquoy drama production of the Addams Family, one of the neatest things was the kids afterwards that performed lined up, and, and somebody counted a, a very large number of former Highgate students.
Yep.
So just like a sports feeder team into a program, this was like, it was like a drama feed.
It is.
For kids that, that really get into performing here, and they go on MBU and jump right in because they've had that experience.
Yeah.
So, uh, we're well-represented in the MBU prom department, which is a really good one.
Yeah, I bet I named some of those kids too, 'cause it was really obvious.
That was a great time.
Of course, Ernie has the backpack theater and.
Yeah.
A lot of kids are involved.
Quite a little bit.
Okay, back to, uh, check warrants.
Okay.
Are you ready, Steve?
Well, now, total accounts payable, total twenty-five thousand, seven, twenty-eight, eighteen, payroll in the total of eight thousand, four, twenty-two, seventy, payroll, other disbursements, two hundred and eleven thousand, six, ninety-one, eighteen, payroll deduction, seventy-nine thousand, one, ninety-three, seventy-three, bringing us a total of three-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand, thirty-five dollars, seventy-nine cents.
I'll entertain a motion to accept those check warrants.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting the check warrants for the amount Steve stated, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, four zero. Financial report.
Okay. So as we're closing on the end of the school year here, um, we're continuing to sort of fine-tune lines and review, um, anticipated expenses and, and reduce lines as we can, I've, I've started that process, um, but just talking to Pat about continuing that with him as the next couple of weeks go by, um, but overall, your, um, anticipated, uh, carryover is up significantly from, um, your last report.
Yeah.
Which is a good thing, right? Um, we've received all of the special ed, uh, intensive reimbursement revenue that we're going to receive, um, and, um, and so that's always a number that we keep an eye on, you received about forty-four thousand dollars more than I was anticipating this year, so that, that helped a little bit with the carryover. Um, they do reconcile at some point again, once the year's over, so we'll see how that works out, but, um, nothing really significant to point out, other than the fact that we're looking at lines and evaluating if they need to be still encumbering funds or not.
Laura, can I ask, um, over the last few years, I've been out of the loop, so I'm back in the circle now, but, um, how have we been in the last three years? This number, close to this number? Are we on board?
It seems like we've been on the cycle where through, throughout the year, we're a little bit worried, but I think the administration does a really good job addressing that, and then, so then we see the carryover kind of grow a little bit towards the end of the year, um, because we, we slow spending down, or the adjustments are made, um, so I would say probably in line where, where you've been the last, at least two years.
Okay.
Um, I'm hoping this number will grow as we move towards the end of the year.
Oh, yeah.
The only thing is the, um, the special ed local costs, which are your, uh, sorry, not the special ed local costs, the special ed assessment lines, the expenses side of that, we're still reconciling that, the state just barely did the reconciliation and sent all the information to us, so Becky and I are working on how that, um, you know, matriculates down to the local schools, um, but definitely in the next week, I'll have that fine-tuned as well, so.
Well, it, it's a nice number on our behalf, but, you know, it's, I just remember it being really, really close in previous years.
Well, a couple of years ago, we barely.
We froze the budget.
Yeah, we freeze the budget very early in the year, just to make it to the end of the year.
But because of that, we ended up okay, it's just it gets a little scary and hairy.
Well, it's been quite a few years when we froze the budget, um, January, February, then, or before that.
Well, a couple of years ago, I think we froze it in October.
Yep.
Yes, the first year in a few that we haven't frozen at some point.
Right.
Yeah, it feels good right now, but.
Yeah.
We don't have very bad.
Sometimes you just get those out of district placements, or, you know, and it just throws you for it, but, um, I'm, I'm, I'm happy right now.
Me too.
Um, the only other thing I wanted to mention also, and I think I mentioned this at the MVSD meeting, um, there are some administrative things as we work through the end of the fiscal years at the, at these local levels, um, for instance, health insurance, there's, I'm contemplating, um, possibly paying out some additional health insurance, um, months if we, if we could, there's, there's just different things that this scenario of merger and ending an entity has brought up, um, so I may be bringing some of those to you in June, we're still trying to problem-solve those, but just to keep that kind of in the back of your head that, you know, there's, there's a little different situation going on, so potential carryover, um, I may be coming with a recommendation on what you could do with that, and I also would say, we're also, I would not advise to spend that carryover down completely if, if, if at all possible, those cumulative carryovers will go into the merged budget and offset taxes the year after next, it's always a year later, and so if all schools spent their anticipated carryover or had deficits, you would feel that in a very negative way, uh, the year after next, so we wanna be cognizant of that, even though we're merging into a new district, that's what comes with us, so, um, just a reminder on that.
Okay, uh, I'll entertain a motion to accept the financial report.
I'll support that.
I'll second it.
Discussion. All those in favor of, of, uh, accepting the financial report as reported, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, four zero. Uh, hot lunch program update.
If you remember, um, I had let you know that I, it was, um, foreseen that the food service management contract was going to be terminated or non-renewed, we were not going to be allowed, um, another one-year renewal, because the program is, was moved to a fixed-price contract, and basically the food service contractor is losing money. Um, I think it was the first time doing that, and they, they basically underbid, and so they're willing to, um, finish out the remainder of the year and absorb that loss, but they can't do that another year. So, this letter is the, the formality of that, they have to notify us, um, in writing that that's happening, and it does reference the different, um, reasons there, so.
This thing with the MBU is superintendent.
Um, and so, out of respect for how much I think the local board, um, values their, um, food service management company and program and contract, I wanted to also let you know that it's, it's looking like, um, the state is recommending, and, and we're sort of recommending from the administrative office, that we pool the food service management contracts, um, for MVSD, uh, that we have, and we go out to bid for all of them together, um, rather than just going out to bid for the Highgate school separate, and that would be the, um, prerogative of the MVSD board to, to move through that process, and so I just wanted to make you aware in case you had any questions or concerns about that at this level, um, that that is how we're sort of being advised to move forward by the state, and, um, I'm hoping that by doing that, we can solicit more competition, because we never, ever have any comparability, um, maybe not, but, and I, it's not because we're not pleased with who we currently have, but it would just be nice to have, um, some other kids come in, and maybe with the volume of three schools, we might be able to obtain that.
And you said there was stuff to do.
Yeah, it's a.
The other advantage would be managing the program, instead of managing three individual programs, we'd be managing one large program, so from an administrative standpoint, be better, uh, that each individual school would still have their individual program, so each individual school could set their own price, like we do now, um, the programs and options that they have can remain individual to the schools, they just would fit under one large contract.
So it would be Swat and Highgate and MBU.
Yeah, 'cause Franklin already has their own private, or.
In-house.
Yep.
And it would be another fixed-price contract, so we would just be paying by the plate, basically. So that's just informational, unless someone has a concern about that, I just wanted to make sure I shared that at the local level.
But our current provider, um, will be able to rebid, okay?
Yes, they will, they will rebid, and they've already, um, expressed.
They just messed up.
Well, it was brand-new to them, brand-new to the state, and it's, it's, we, I think everybody did the best they could. Well, it was brand new to them, brand new to the state, and it's, we, I think everybody did the best they could. But I had a feeling this would, might be the case, and then quite frankly, I think it's really wonderful that they're willing to finish through the remainder of the year, knowing that they're going to show maybe fifteen to twenty thousand dollar loss.
So that's just Highgate, not MBU or Swan?
MBU and Swan actually have like one or two more years on their possible renewal cycle, but because of the advice of the child nutrition program at the state level and the merger, now would be the best time to pool, rather than, like Chris said, rather than every year we have to go back out to bid and, you know, and if we do it separately, we wouldn't get any other bids probably, and if we pool it, we might.
It would be big enough.
Right, the volume would be there, maybe.
It was a ten cent increase, right? This past round?
That was the student.
That's a paid, yeah, that's a, that's a paid meal price. This is, they will charge us a flat rate per, and I'm sorry, I actually don't know that off the top of my head, I should have brought that with me, what we're paying right now.
Not what Pete, not what the students are paying.
Right, it's what we're paying the food service management company to, to get to prepare that meal.
That's what I was talking about.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I, I don't have that number with me right now, but I can send it to you.
Richard, we were, we were the first ones that went to this fixed, uh, fixed plate, fixed price. Fixed price contract. We were the guinea pigs, and that's, and that's some of the issue with the confusion, or the reason why it was under bid. Everybody was, this was their first time bidding it that way, and so a lot was learned.
On both parties.
So, so, so what's MBU? MBU is, they weren't fixed?
No, because they, they didn't have to go out to bid last year, so they were allowed to renew their current contract, which was a, it's cost reimbursement.
They're newer than Highgate though, right? Yeah.
They're newer to food service management company, but Highgate was in the, you're allowed one contract, sorry, a contract every year, but you're allowed to renew for four more years. So you can have a, a new contract where you have to launch a bid, and that's, that's for that current year. Then you're allowed to renew four more years after that without launching a formal bid again.
Is that what MBU did?
MBU did that, but Highgate was on a different cycle than that, basically. It was comforting that when I talked to the state of Vermont, they did say that the fixed-price, price that Highgate is paying is very low compared to others in the state. So I think, you know, the abbey does, does try to take care of our schools, and I appreciate that.
Yeah.
But I'm still gonna, I'm still gonna push.
Yeah.
In need, I still say there's the poverty and all that in the area, I still think.
It's going down, though.
We're, we're gonna, our kids should be able to get free lunch right straight through.
We didn't, we didn't even qualify to share.
I, I know what you're saying, and the other thing I'm beginning to believe is we're, we're consolidating now, right? We need to put it into a budget where we help, help support the, the hot lunch and kids, because there's a lot of kids out there, I don't think you're getting enough. And, you know, and I, I know they're doing it up in, some of northeast is doing it.
They are.
The, it's part of the budget, and, you know, I think, I'm beginning to think that's the way, you know.
They're struggling with cash flow, though, when I talk to people that are involved with that program. It, what happens a lot of the time, and I'm, I'm not disagreeing with anything you're saying, I agree with all of it, and I think we, we work really hard to make sure kids have as much as they can, but often, oftentimes it ends up being a perpetually larger sum of money that ends up needing to be invested, which is fine if that's what the board wants to do, but it's a lot to talk about if we're going to do that. And right now, the free and reduced price percentage, percentages in our schools are actually going down. They're not going up, which is part of the problem with the cash flow of some of our programs. The higher the free and reduced price percentage, the more claims reimbursement money you're getting from the state and federal government. So even if it drops a couple percent in each school, that has a major financial impact on cash flow, when you're talking about a million dollars, you know, across the board of, of revenue. So it's on my radar, Richard, I have a note stuck to my computer that Richard Flynn wants to save. And we talk about this a lot, and if I can do it, I, I, if I can make it happen, I, I would make it happen, but there would be a big conversation about how much it would cost.
Yeah.
And Rich will be a happy man.
Go, Richard.
Yeah.
But it's true, a lot of kids don't get enough.
No, they don't.
But we do offer free breakfast to all kids. Reduced-price kids get free, because that's a state subsidy that happens. We do offer free supper in our after-school programs, so we're doing pretty good. I mean, I, I feel like we're doing a lot, but I agree with you.
Yeah, any other discussion for hot lunch program? Hearing none, we'll move on to the bond anticipation note.
Okay, so I did bring the documents, these bond anticipation note, if you remember, is to sort of solidify the debt for the bond anticipation note prior to the merger. It's with Community Bank, they had, they came in at the rate of one point five, four or five percent, which was the lowest one that we had received. I have the bond anticipation note that needs to be signed by everyone. I have the resolution, which basically says that you have the authority to enter into this borrowing. That needs to be signed by everyone. I have a tax certificate, which basically outlines the terms of the loan and, and that you have the authority to do that again, and we'll follow all the proper paperwork. And then there's a post-issuance compliance procedure that I need everyone to sign, that basically says, if for whatever reason this school stopped being a school, we would have, we would have to go through a specific process to probably pay the money back. And that, we will follow all the, file all the proper paperwork to make sure that the bond proceeds are being spent properly.
And once again, this is just a note securing the bond because of the merger. This isn't something we're actually planning on using, but we have to have this in order to secure the bond.
This is anticipation of taxes.
Anticipation of the bond proceeds. So if we did borrow from this, we only would pay interest on what we borrow.
Right.
But again, we're not planning on doing that, it's kind of a formality, but we would use bond proceeds to pay off the loan, so you're not borrowing twice, this is one or the other.
Totally got it.
The maturity date on this is, is December thirty-first, so it has to pay back by then if we did borrow anything.
Are there three signature pages? Three tabs? I didn't count them, is it three or four?
I found three, so far.
Okay.
Any questions or comments regarding the bond anticipation note? Hearing none, we'll move on to old business. Updates from the MVSD Transition Board. We met for the second time Monday night. We voted to put forward a budget, that was the June eleventh that I mentioned earlier. There is three more board positions available. I believe Nola is running for one, potentially. Okay, Nola's running for the one for Highgate.
Do you have your petition with you?
All done.
Awesome.
Congratulations.
We were all going to sign.
I already did.
Oh, you did?
I was the first one.
Oh, should we even ask?
Do we have anybody for Swanton and Franklin?
Yes, I am not sure, we don't have all the petitions in. Terry O'Shea is running for Swanton, that petition is in. The petitions for Franklin, we know of, I think, two people, but they're not in yet.
Okay. Let's see, we started going through policies, as a new board, we have to adopt a lot of policies, because it's.
It's a new board.
It's a new board. So we did our first readings of those. Pretty much it. We are planning on meeting again on June fourth, and we meet at six at the MBU library, and then at seven is the informational meeting for the bond, or the budget vote. And we are planning on doing an informational video that will be posted on Channel fifteen, which will also be available online, once we set up a link and have a videotape.
So Chris, I brought it up at the meeting the other night, I've got us down for June four, eleven, thirteen, and eighteen. Highgate School Board on the thirteenth.
Yes.
Yes.
Sounds right?
Yep.
Also, something that came up at that meeting, when we were talking about links and videos, and I just wanted to make sure, we do have a link on the Highgate. It's hard, because it's a, it's a, it's a Google site page, but there is the link for the school board. There's lots of minutes and agendas first, but if you go down enough, we have Highgate School Board, and you click that link, and you get to the YouTube channel, and all the boards' meetings are there. So the, the link is there, I just wanted to double-check, because anytime somebody tells me they can't find the thing on the website, then I get concerned. So there are all our lovely faces, they're there. So I wanted to make sure people knew. Chris, before the haircut.
And I'm wearing the same shirt.
You're wearing the same shirt?
Don't point out.
He always wears it.
No, I have a bunch of plaid shirts I wear at these meetings.
How does this guy?
Shut it.
Okay, uh, I lost my place. Oh, land sale property agreement, the NATO property.
So I have a purchase and sale agreement, it's very straightforward, if you want to just have it so you can take a look. We're going to be looking for a motion to authorize the board chair to sign it. Here's a, I, no, I sent you a copy. It's, this is the preliminary part, saying we're agreeing that we're going to sell that piece of property, that the community authorized this board to sell. And then, and I have the attorneys working on the deed, and when the deed is filed, the quitclaim deed,
Right.
then that becomes, the sale becomes final.
So I would entertain a motion to allow the board chair to sign.
The purchase and sales.
Where do I sign on that?
I, I have one.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. So, uh, I lost my place again. Richard, second.
Right here.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of allowing the board chair to sign the purchase and sales agreements, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero. And then we also need to come up with a, probably a list of three people to represent the trustees for this property. I had a suggestion for that. I was thinking Lisa, who's not here, so it's great to volunteer her. Clarence Miller and David Roddy. David and Clarence are currently trustees for another fund for Highgate, so they have experience doing that. And they're also board members, David and Lisa are board members that won't be board members soon.
They will soon.
So they have some vested interest in where we, or how we wanted the property to be represented in the future.
You got the idea.
Or utilized.
Need a motion?
Yep.
I'll, I'll make that.
I'll sign it.
Try abstaining.
Why you still don't give it?
Ain't gonna make much difference.
Any discussion? All those in favor of having David Roddy, Lisa Wells, and Clarence Miller be the trustees for the NATO property, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extensions? Motion carries four zero.
And you will, will the superintendent get in touch with those people?
Yes, I'd be happy to, I need the contact information for Clarence.
I can talk to Clarence soon if you need to.
Yeah.
I see him at McKinnon's quite a bit. And I, I can reach out to Lisa too, and I'll ask her to stop by and sign the anticipation note. Give me a file. Oh, yeah, I do.
Thank you.
Okay.
Will you meet with Sharon, because, for the signature?
For signing this, yep.
Okay.
See, they meet again.
Next Thursday.
It's Thursday, right?
Yeah.
I can see if I get a letter or something. Any, let's see, any Act forty-six or legislative updates?
Not really, I mean, there was, the Senate sort of pulled out of the conference committee on the delay, and they just attached their version of the delay to a special education delay bill. So, but the House isn't agreeing to that either, so I think we're still sort of in that same holding pattern at this point. I haven't heard anything, it's been about a week since they did that. The session is winding down, not a heck of a lot being accomplished in this session, but.
It's more familiar, bringing the last of the kids down there, yeah.
Some years they push a lot of things through, and other years they do a lot of jockeying and talking about different things that never quite come to fruition, but.
Jockeying, yeah, I wouldn't call it that, okay.
So that's really the only update that we have there.
Okay, and then, oh, did, have they done anything with a Plan B for us for, for budget goes down? Have they put something in the other?
No.
No? Wonderful.
So we are, I spoke with a group of teachers in another school yesterday, and I said I'm very optimistic that our schools, school communities are supportive of our schools, and that we're going to get the information out there as much as possible. I do, and I have been working with our Vermont School Board Association, Vermont Superintendent's Association, to, in the AOE, to advocate that something gets put in, usually something like the miscellaneous education bill around a default budget for school districts, such as ours, that have very late votes. And all of us that are under an imposed merger essentially have a very late, a late vote, so. I feel confident and optimistic that something will happen, because it has to.
Yep, I wouldn't doubt that. Okay, and then last roof update. Abe called me yesterday, told me the roof is done. They have to come back and clean up their stuff, there's some stuff, I believe they're going to come back Monday to clean up. And I'm, I'm actually working here in Highgate Monday, so I'm going to try to meet with them and walk around with them, make sure it's done to our satisfaction, but I think the roof is finally done.
Yay.
I would say he was great, Abe was great about texting me all the updates when they were coming back, and where they're going to be working, and so I was able to communicate with teachers and, and it was, you know, one day, one short period of time, but after that, everything went smoothly, and we were great to work with.
Yeah, I have to say that too, he's been great to work with. It's been challenging due to the weather. This process took far longer than any of us wanted, including him, but weather is a challenge sometimes, so. He's been pretty accommodating. So, uh, do we need executive setting?
I think that that little note is from last month, and when we redid the agenda, it was there, so we don't actually have any. I do have a superintendent's news letter that wasn't put on here, because Puratt wasn't sure whether I had it ready or not. I will email it to all of you.
So I look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Wow. I'll second.
We're getting better every month.
Yeah, all those in favor of adjourning at seven twenty-seven, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I think we got it down pat now, it's just.